All right, I'll follow the city council of the city of Dunsmere regular meeting back to order. And I will move into item number seven, which is reporting out from closed session. The city council voted unanimously to give city staff and city attorney direction related to the items on our closed session. So we'll now move into item number seven, which is special presentations and announcements. I believe, did we have the two special presentations tonight?
Yes, we do. We need a brochure. Oh, the Rotary Club. She is our president at this moment in time.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Okay, I know this looks very strange, but I do not, um, okay. On the rivers, on the lakes, on the piers, I've been seeing these for years, for people to put fishing gear in. I know that there's going to be people that won't use it, but I really think most of our conscious fishermen will do this. Save wildlife, and I can recycle it. I can send it up, it can be recycled. We used to have a kind of fishing net that broke up in your hands, just to salt. The monofilament, I think that's what it's called, does not. So it just winds around animals, birds, and my dog sometimes when it swims in the river. So I would like to place these in Towne Valley Park, or City Park. I'm thinking Butterfly Bridge. Places where people fish most, where they come climbing up, maybe they'll see to use this. They can't be downloaded to the water because the water will take it away one day. Maybe attach to the bridge. Does that sound good?
Or by where the signs are posted for fishing regulations.
On that sign, yes. Things like that. I just want to bring it to you, just so you have that courage.
Can I help you out a little bit? We have four. I'm also in the Rotary Club. I actually built the quarter. So there's four, and we plan on strategically placing them at the most popular fishing holes. And Brian from the city, Brian Wilson, he's, you know, he's thinking upon himself to make sure that the signs are posted in the appropriate spots in these famous fishing, notorious fishing spots. Because they're more than famous, they're notorious. So by putting this there, when the people pull up and see, read the rules of the signs, they see that there, when they go down, they're going to automatically want to bring their life back up where it is.
I hope so, yeah.
And that's what our hopes are, and I've...
I've seen them for so many years in so many places. And I just think with us promoting fishing all the time, it would be really nice. I'm at the river constantly. I pick up, I do this, winding up, lots of hooks, lots. It's just yuck.
River cleanup, the big thing was the fishing line, the big ball fishing line.
The fishing line, I mean, you said you found a huge...
Twenty-two pound fishing ball, ball, lot of hooks.
You're like, what?
That's ridiculous.
I'm asking for permission.
Our blessings, is what you're saying.
Yes, blessings. To do this, I don't know when exactly, but we're going to work on it. We need labels of those signs and labels that explains what this is for and...
Keep our rivers clean.
Keeping our rivers clean, keeping the animals safe, for the birds and everything else.
I would say, Madam Mayor, that since we just, I don't think it really needs our permission officially in terms of the resolution, but I would assume as long as we don't have any objection, we can assume our well wishes and leave it at that.
Our blessings.
I think if it's going to be mounted on the bridge or any type of like city structure like that, I would definitely suggest working with city staff on that, just to make sure that it is safe.
Yeah, like what Dave said, I can talk to Brian and see if he thinks it can be strong enough to hold on to things. We have to figure out how to do them.
So yeah, I would definitely refer to you to our city manager for the moment, and then we'll hopefully have a city manager taking office here pretty soon. So I would refer you to them, to talk to them about seeking the proper permissions for the mounting.
Get a name, so first.
Does anybody have, does anybody have any questions? Councilmember R.
Well, you know, the, I love the idea, as a casual fisherman, and I'm as lazy that I would fish at the dump wall in the city of Dunsmere. And besides the monofilament, what I see a lot of are the empty salmonade jars and lids. So could we agree?
I think so. And the bottom of the tier is to clean it out.
Yeah, like we're trying to figure out something to maybe make a little flap around the front, but it has to be safe for your hand not getting cut or something. But we saw something rubber on the outside.
I love seeing the signs. Whatever you dump into the drain, it goes right into the river. It should be the same thing, the signage on these, you know, keep your fishing gear out of the river.
Yeah.
Help us.
Keep our rivers clean.
Some signs stick if you're going to go on the water.
Yeah, some really good signs.
But they didn't come in time for...
I know, I would have had it maybe next week or something.
So we got a Rotary sticker on it, thinking maybe you guys get, you know, as people.
Because we want to put a Rotary sticker on it too from Dunsmere.
Are there any other questions from the council members? All right, same thing?
Nope, and I think, oh, one question to Dave, is there anyone small?
The same size, but they're longer.
They're longer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Do we have any other special presentations?
Stephen Bryant from the Resource Center. Oh, and Miss Karen, good evening.
I have Karen Quinn, who's actually right here from the library to discuss that. I'll do some more of these flyers for the public to review. I am the chair of the Dunsmere community, Kearsen, which is a group of concerned community members and leaders, including members of Rotary, city council, for the mayor's, Karen O'Quinn, the library. We have Dave Dean from the clinic, Sheriff Lopey's part of that, Ed Pescis. We met recently and we decided to do a special event to honor 110 years in Dunsmere. The city of Dunsmere was incorporated in 1990, and I worked with Bron and MacLeod to help verify the certification. I know there's going to be debate on the years. That's not the important part. The important part is we're trying to identify the oldest living resident in Dunsmere, and we're going to honor him in a few different ways. We've spoken with the mayor and staff. We'd like to present them at the 15th of August, city council meeting with a key to the city. The libraries, they have presented with a plaque. Dave and I presented the plaque then, go put it in the plaque, honoring the citizen in the library. And with the help of the Dunsmere Rotary and the Dunsmere Community Resource Center, we're going to give this president $2 for every year that they've been alive and lived in Dunsmere. So we've already had several candidates come through, Karen and I, but then everybody, several already, yeah, so...
They're the eldest, not the oldest?
Well, we're, it's a two-part thing.
How say, eldest?
Eldest.
The eldest records longest living. So not only you have to be the oldest, but you have to live here the longest, so there's a little two-part.
Okay.
We're looking for the longest resident, and the oldest longest, who that is the oldest in age. In two years for every year that they've been alive.
So this is...
Two dollars, sorry.
What if you've lived, were born here, moved away, moved back?
It's based on how long you've actually lived in the city of Dunsmere.
Okay, so how many years you've lived here now, what do you want?
Yeah.
Is that, look forward to this one?
Yeah, we already had some well-qualified candidates coming. Karen, Karen O'Quinn and I will be going out the week of the 15th to interview and figure out who the exact candidate will be, who's the award winner, and then we'll have to get some stories. I don't know if those have been told yet or not. I realize because of the age, they might be homebound.
Yeah, you're welcome.
But we want to get some pictures. I'll put a little power from participation, honor them at the 15th city council conference.
Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
If I could, one of the things we're trying to do with this, besides, you know, just celebrating that, is to engage the senior citizens, you know, to reach out and start identifying them. And I don't know if everyone realizes, but we were just listed as, in the state of California, as the number one most dangerous city for the potential for a fire, and people that are senior are unable to get out. So this is, one of the things that this will help us do is to engage the senior community and start, start helping to identify people that might be in that condition. The other thing is, I figure if we have a tie at the top, we can have them arm wrestle to figure out.
Very good. We've also established a fairly reasonable database on seniors, and this will just help expand that. So when there is a crisis, we can reach out to them and help them right away. Also, we can check in with them periodically throughout the year, make sure they need to be met, make sure they're being cared for.
You know, I'll go so far as to say, you know, a good thing to say, but if you've got to be fair, you might even want to check with hospice. There might be somebody old they can't get here.
That would absolutely be it. That's why Karen and I are going to go out in the community. Once we get nominations on candidates, the two of us will go through the community to where they're at and interview.
This is going to be fun. Good job. We're the front runners, so you don't have to give names, but how many do you have that you're going to buy right now?
Well, there are five that we currently know of. And we're looking for one nomination, so either call the library or the resource center if you have nominations, and talk to your neighbors and see if anybody knows somebody else.
Councilmember Art, do you have a question?
Well, I'm, thank you for taking the initiative. In the 12 years I've lived at Dunsmere, I had the distinct honor of meeting Reva Coon before she passed.
Yeah.
At 104 years of age, and she was bright and vital. So I hope whoever the finals are, that they get to come and talk to the community, whether it's at the library, or the resource center, or here. There's much for us to learn from our seniors.
Great stories, great stories to share.
I don't want to scare anybody off, because you have some 80 to 97-year-old residents that have been here in the community for that long, so, but we're still looking for more nominations. We hope to verify those. Yeah, and these I'll leave for the community members up here on the table, if anybody else wants some more. And I'll post them up, we're going to put them up all around town, it'll be on Facebook, so, thank you.
Yeah, councilmembers, do you have any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I don't believe we have any other scheduled special presentations tonight, so we will now move into general public comment. This is the section of our agenda that members of the public may come up and address the city council on items that are either on the city council consent agenda or are not on the agenda itself. And so on, our consent agenda tonight for the general public, we have a check registrar from July 19 through July 26, an authorization commitment to the lead California cities statewide local streets and roads needs assessment funding project, and then approval of road closure of Dunsmere Avenue at Spruce and Cedar Street and Pine and at Sacramento Avenue and Shasta Avenue, use of parking motor city car, and electrical connections for the Steep Pump Festival, which will be September 20 through the 22nd, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. That last one was a little bit of a mouthful, but that's what's on our consent agenda for tonight. So we'll now open to general public comment on that or items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move into council and staff comments. We'll start with city staff.
Madam Mayor, you...
There's committee reports at number 10.
Can I go on to make a report in terms of DEPAK?
Yeah.
Greenways got it in the committee report.
What page, somebody tell me what page this map is on about the local issue? Because it won't work.
So we're not, we're not adding consent agenda yet? So once we get to consent agenda, we can discuss that. So at this time, we're on council and staff member comments. We'll open it up to interim city manager. Do you have any staff comments for tonight?
Well, before the city public...
So again... I will, I will discuss that very much.
Excuse me, one of the comments I was going to make, that I think one of the committees here are talking about committee reports, was on Greenways, one of the two staff we went into was Greenway. The DEPAK is working on that, and I have met with them a couple times this week, and they'll have a more in-depth report. We have yet to meet the comments representative, but that's scheduled for Monday. The other thing, you asked me to comment on the cannabis processing of their permits. We scheduled inspections this last week. Inspections were done on one, and there's a list of items that need to be corrected or done by that applicant. The other applicant, we requested to do the inspections, and they asked for a month off if we did those inspections. So that's, yeah. That's where we are. Do you have any questions about that?
I have a question from councilmembers at this time about the staff comments.
Thank you.
All right, seeing none.
Just wanted to check back with you regarding the Lola dinner that I had offered the city for in October. Lori's wife is kind of returning to now for information since Tim's turned snogger in Mount Shasta. There was a concern that because the annual lead conference was the following week, that possibly Lola should be canceled, postponed, or something like that. I talked to Lori, and her answer to me this afternoon was, from her feedback, only Dunsmere and Wayrica are sending anyone to the annual conference. She said she does have an offer from Ken Kalphini, City of Lead, to host the Lola meeting, and then we would go for January. You can't make a decision tonight, but I just wanted to put that out there.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on that?
No, we have, I have a lot to do.
We can just move it up a week? First thing in, cover it.
Well, we can schedule this for a formal action if you'd like. All right, all right, councilmember comments, councilmember Deutsch?
Please, yes, I wanted to take this opportunity for two things that have to do with the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to promote and make everyone aware that there's an exciting new event on the Chamber event calendar, and that's a steep pump competition, steep pump festival, I'm sorry. And so if you don't know what that is, I'm going to be helping, and everyone that doesn't know can help get the word out about what that is, but it's basically a costume celebration where people dress up as though they were in the Victorian era and imagining what the future technologies would be. The point is, is that there's a club down in Sacramento, a club in Chico. Richard Dinjas had gone down and met with both of them at different festivals. They're really excited about coming up, started looking, putting things on Facebook, and there's a huge excitement about that. And I just learned that the city of MacLeod is upset with us because they had wanted to do this, and we're doing it first, and they're hoping that we'll do it terribly so that they can pick up, you know, the pieces afterwards. So I want to make sure, don't put that in there, please.
I'm cracking up, I think it's hysterical, I didn't know you'd probably talk to me.
Anyway, I'm just excited about the opportunity. I think it'll be a really fun thing to do. And so the idea is that one of the lanes in the Dunsmere Avenue there would be closed off with the idea that there would be vendors, and that would be the center of the celebration down there, with one lane left open for emergencies. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, I don't know if most people know this, but starting with last year, about this time, the fires and the smoke, one of the most important events for both the Rotary and the Chamber of Commerce was canceled, and that was Brewfest. One of the fallouts of that is that the Chamber budget was such that they were no longer able to pay the executive director, Richard Dinjas, to be the executive director. And in fact, they're a couple of months behind on payment for him. But the problem is now that, and I was always hoping that this would be something that could be turned around, but it doesn't look that way now because Richard Dinjas is now the director of Chamber of Commerce of Lead. And not only that, but the city of Mount Shasta was upset because they thought they had it in line on Richard. And so the bottom line is, of the three cities down here that know Richard so well, all of them loved to have him, and we lost out. That's all I have.
All right, councilmember Ryan?
I'm in your book.
Councilmember Casta?
Well, first I want to say congratulations, you passed the vote, Brian. He just got married in a gangster. And if you guys don't know, who's lovely wife is mine, who's in the office, and so there's such a cute couple. Couple things I would like to talk about.
So we will get to that consent, because we'll probably have to pull that.
Yeah, we're going to pull it. It's wrong.
We'll do that in consent.
Okay, let's go to, first, the pool. On the 17th, we're going to have yard sale again, and we're trying to try and finish the pool season with one last thing. We made about 400 bucks last time, and I got to tell you, you people are amazing. You bought it up, you say, well, there ain't nothing for sale, but here's 20 bucks. I sold 200 bucks worth of junk, and I got 200 bucks worth of donating, so you people are great. Let's do it again, one more time, see what we come up with, and wrap the pool season up with a security, knowing that we got good gear for next year for our lifeguards.
Do you need donations?
We always need donations, okay?
So again, there's no back end for...
Again, reiterate, it's on the 17th, it will be held in front of the rec building. In case some people have been noticing, some people haven't, but 1727, our train is under construction. The process is begun. I am not going to promise it will be done this year. It's a long process now that we've got into it. When it's done, you'll be able to go out, touch it, take pictures of it, but you will not be able to climb up inside the caboose. It's just too dangerous. There's too many moving parts, there's things that you can get hurt on, and you want you to get in there, and you can get on there, and that for a liability, that's not happening. I want you to be able to go up to it, touch it, look at it, take pictures with it, take pictures of it. That's about where it's going to go. Just want everybody to know, I'm working on it. I'm trying to work with a couple different clubs. We've yet to merge. We've yet to merge. Find me, put that up there. And the other thing is, Brewfest is Saturday, and I'm taking it upon myself, because I have not got a response yet, but I'm pretty sure I don't need it. Brewfest this year is offering any firefighter and any first responder a 20% discount at the door. So if you guys aren't out there protecting us, and you got the day off, please come to Brewfest and let us show you a way of our appreciation. There was something else, but I can't remember what it was. I will say that I'm looking forward to going to the conference with council and making some connections to bring back to the city so we can do some great things.
All right, thank you. Councilmember R.
Two items, Madam Chair. One is, early on, the council designated me to be the lead on funding issues for our water sewer system. And I've been working with Blake and the Regional Water Action Group. And the city has put forth two proposals for funding by the Department of Water Resources. Another proposition, one, the one that the city considers most important is the intake system for our water supply. And it's a project that's going to cost a bit over a million dollars to completely replace the headworks. But the hope is, replacing the headworks plus ultraviolet will cure the...
Tech two.
Color form tests that we've been getting back from the state with violation notices. In the early meeting, our project was scored 22 out of 25, with 25 being the maximum points you can get for a project. We relooked with base engineering and the staff, and I just got noticed today that our project has now gotten 24 points out of the 25 possible. Our second project that remains unrated is to upgrade Shasta Springs and to install individual metering. But it looks like we have a very realistic possibility that on a regional basis, we will be the highest rated project for replacing our headwaters. As this regional request for funding, Lead, Mount Shasta, MacLeod, the Indian Tribes, Pacific Trust, California Trout, all the competing, we're in number one place for that one project. So we're looking for everybody. The second notice is, I've been working with my neighbor, Linda Price down the street, LP Designs, and we have secured POP's Performing Arts Center for the business-to-business meeting of our new city manager. It will be in the first week of September. I'm still getting sponsors, although I have five sponsors at this point. I envision having a panel presentation besides the meet and greet. I hope the mayor introduces Todd, Todd gets to speak to a bit, to business community members. We have a panel on the challenges of rebuilding Dunsmere's economy and then its music and orders, and meet and greet for the second hour. And that all seems to be going pretty well.
All right.
I can't remember what it was, and I think here you can help me out. We've got that orchestra people coming. What they playing down there, POP's put on the concert?
They're doing City Park.
City Park, what's the name of them?
City Park.
Music by the Mountain. Music by the Mountain. If you might be heard, they're pretty good, and a couple of the kids that have won it, the big winner of the scholarship went to Golden Eagle High School, and then the other one went to Mount Shasta High School, and they're now part of this thing. So if you haven't heard them, unfortunately, I'd like you to go listen to them, because they're pretty cool. And the other thing was, support our farmers market. It's now open on Thursday. There's some good stuff out there. There's a supporter.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll go online really quick. So I just want to address, I guess we have a letter in our mailbox from Devin Warner, a member of the public. It was signed as a planning commissioner, but it looks like it's not a formal action by the planning commissioner itself because only three members signed it. But it, I want to clear some stuff up about hazard mitigation funding, because it seems like a lot of people are running around freaking out, and that's okay, but let's clear some stuff up. So the letter is in reference to the local hazard mitigation plan and the city not having one in place, and that puts homeowners and businesses at risk for not being able to rebuild. That is 100% false. FEMA local hazard mitigation plans are for communities, and they're for governments. They don't cover businesses, they do not cover individual homeownership, it doesn't do any of that. So even if you have a local hazard mitigation plan, that does not help homeowners or businesses rebuild. And if you do not have one, that does not disqualify you from getting funds from the state, your insurance company, or the federal government to rebuild. You can do that as a private resident or a private business at any time for any disaster. You can contact the Small Business Administration. They typically set up emergency support for businesses to start back up. You can contact homeowners associations, CAL FIRE, among other state, CAL OES, and federal agencies. There are a number of ways to rebuild your home and business that has nothing to do with city planning. So the hazard mitigation plan is something that cities need to get post-disaster recovery for roadwork, for sewer lines that may break, for, you know, if a bridge goes out. That's when you need a hazard mitigation plan. In reference to wildfires, though, we do have a community wildfire protection plan, and that allows us to get state funding, which covers a majority of the funding that cities get. So when cities go to the federal government, to FEMA, to get funding, FEMA typically doesn't spend the lion's share, it's usually coming from the state in most cases. So we do have coverage for fire season. You do not have to freak out just because we don't have a local hazard mitigation plan. It is something that we are working on, it is something that is important, and we are committed to doing that. We're going for a grant at this time to do that. But it does not disqualify homeowners, it does not disqualify the city, it does not disqualify businesses from getting funding. Everybody is fine. The only thing that is not covered is floods. If you are in a flood plain, I strongly urge you to get flood insurance. That is the only way you're going to get money back, related to any natural disaster and volcano. But that's less of a thing down here than up there. But, so, so just to reiterate, for fire season, check with your insurance company, check with the state of California, they have many materials, and they even have grant programs to help you retrofit your house to be more fire-safe. And they have grants available for homeowners who need help with trimming their trees. Please check the CAL OES websites, please check CAL FIRE's land use division. But just because the city does not have a certain plan, does not mean anyone is disqualified. So, there you go.
Well, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I, the biggest thing is, one of the things FEMA is training cities on now is called self-sufficiency. It's all about you getting educated about your homeowner's insurance policies, it's you being personally prepared to go. So I strongly urge you to take a look at those websites. There's a lot of information out there on CAL FIRE specifically about getting your properties ready, getting your families ready. We keep extra bags of dog food just in case we have to go. So people have to start doing that. And it's not gonna be the city that's gonna be able to go and do all of this for you. So please, just look at those websites and everything will be okay. So, thank you. We had a fire in Mount Shasta earlier today and everyone was calling the city. What is the city gonna do? The city put it out, it is fine. I understand the fear and I understand the concern, but everyone's taking a breath and it will be okay. Alright, that is my little comment for tonight. Linda, we're gonna move down to committee reports if you'd like to go first, since we're on the disaster planning topic.
Well, thank you. And the answer was very informative and I appreciate that because we all need to understand further the tendencies of FEMA's local hazard mitigation planning. There's a lot of confusion about it.
Yes.
So I think that, again, my name's Linda Shade and I'm the chair of the Disaster Planning Advisory Committee and I have a couple members here, Mike Delavanna and Paul Blackwell. And we'll just give you a quick update on what we've been doing and then talk about the green waste that Randy mentioned. We are, we've been tasked with having the local hazard mitigation plan as one of our major priorities in terms of our work as a disaster planning advisory committee. So we're a little concerned about it because we feel like we need to show some movement on it. So perhaps what we can do in the future is better educate our members. And we can do that now. And we can also maybe get a little more clarification about what our role in the DPAC is in terms of the local hazard mitigation. We had a presentation from Arlene Dinges, but perhaps we need just a little bit more as we move forward. Because it's our understanding too that we could be available for mitigation funds prior to a disaster if we identify hazards in our community or confuse some mitigation work and then make a budget for some funding. So we still want to support the city, we think it's a high priority, but perhaps we can get a little more clarification on how we can help with it. The other thing we've been doing is we produced two electronic newsletters that gave people ready for wildfire season, educating how to harden their homes and how to create defensible space, preparing for evacuation, getting a grow bag ready. But those newsletters need more expansion to more people. We need to get to more residents and we need to do more hard copy for people who don't use the internet and don't have access to the internet. We plan to move forward on a disaster preparedness website, but that entails a lot. And we're waiting to see how budget situation works out, if we can get any support for that. I've also reached out to Pusher and Hope Door with them to see if they can help us. And if we don't have a lot of funding for a website, we can reach out and get some sponsorship for that. But that is still an arduous to complete before the end of the year to get a website up. So there'll be links to the newsletter or website and to the city website as well.
Just really quick, I believe we did earmark funding for that in the operating budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I know the financial committee did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the outcome was.
Oh, sorry.
That's a great thing.
Yeah, we've got that.
Yeah. So I can, oh, the other thing is, is we got new brochures from the California Fire Safety Council, creating defensible space and how to protect your home from an air-driven fire similar to Paradise. And so we've given those, I believe we have copies of these at the city hall. We've got a lot more, we want to start getting them out, bringing them to Neighborhood Watch and passing them out. You're welcome to have some of them here. We're working with Chief Padilla on a wildfire safety guide similar to the one that we did in Mount Shasta. Which would have an evacuation map, a basic map showing the routes and the exits, basically the ramps getting on to I-5. And then tips for evacuation, important numbers and information and safety tips and those kinds of things. So that's in the planning stages now. We all got the brochure that Mount Shasta mailed out, so that's very useful. It just doesn't have our mapping on it, so we want to update that.
Have we looked into the idea of working with CHP to have them share with us what the evacuation plans they have? I understand that they have one if it's coming from the south and one if it's coming from the north. And I know that on Facebook, people have been asking and worried about, oh, there's no way we can all get out. But I know they tried to parse that out. Is that something you could bring back to us or have them come and let, educate the people on? If there is a fire coming from the south, this is what probably will happen.
Absolutely, yes.
A lot of safety professionals do not like to do that type of presentation because there are so many different factors to what's happening that you don't want to give people one direction. The direction that safety officials give the general public, any member who is a non-safety individual who should be evacuating, our best advice being to do is please listen to the first responders and safety officials to where you should be going. They will be placed throughout the community and they will be giving clear direction, please follow that. We don't want to get into a situation where someone may see smoke from the north and reality, the winds are taking it from the south and they start going south because they think it's gonna go that way. So we strongly suggest people don't necessarily do that, but I believe Chief Padilla is working on an evacuation plan.
Yes, he is, and I agree with everything Mayor Vasquez said. And that's what I've been learning as I've been dealt the news of this. You have to be really careful about, you know, the evacuation. So they're very hesitant to say, well, this is the way we're gonna evacuate. You can have all kinds of scenarios. The only thing that we're trying to balance is we've got a lot of people that are getting a little, you know, concerned and worried. There's Facebook talk and all of that. We want an evacuation plan, we want to know exactly what we need to do. And I think we can balance it out by explaining to people that we have to be vigilant, we have to be prepared, we have to do more to prepare ourselves and then follow instructions if we can. I think the biggest worry that people have is it is something that happens in the middle of the night and the emergency warning system doesn't pick them. And the evacuation, the sheriff's department who is ultimately in charge of the evacuation maybe doesn't get picked off right away. People want to know, how do they get out? So we just need to educate people on how to be sane and safe, be prepared to leave, and be vigilant. If you know there's a high wind and there's red flag warnings, be ready, be ready to go. Know your neighborhood, know the best routes to get out, and leave early. That's the biggest thing that we need to really teach people about, is leaving early when we know there's a wildfire coming.
There is one particular aspect that does fit right now regardless, and that is that people are concerned about the construction out there and what happened right now. And I do know that CHP has made it clear that if there was a fire from whichever direction, that they would turn off any incoming traffic. And the other way, they would open up all the lanes heading in that direction. So I think letting people understand that they've understood that there's construction going on and if there is an emergency, that will be taken care of, that all the lanes will go in the direction they want to go.
So, and that's what we've been talking about with Chief Padilla. I think we want to get a draft of a map and then bring all the parties together, like you mentioned Cal Trans and Highway Control and all that. Just talk it through. How best can we, let's all get on the same page about how we educate our residents here to make sure they understand that, yes, they will most likely make I-5 going all one direction so we can all get out. So it is a challenging thing doing evacuation plans, for sure. I know Big Dave, that's one of your priorities and believe we were trying, but it does, it takes all the parties coming together to agree on what we're gonna tell the public and that's a challenge. The other thing we're doing there, a bit of concerns raised about the audible emergency alert system, to improve it, to make it more under, to make sure people understand it. We went off today with a fire up in Mount Shasta, five horn sounds. Make sure it can be heard in the north part of Dunsmere, that it's not heard very well in the north part of Dunsmere.
Oh, I can definitely hear it. It works very well.
It was fixed.
Yeah, it works very well.
It's broken for years.
Yeah, except like for people that are inside, like the gas station didn't hear the alarm today, we checked. So they got a lot of noise going on. Most of us in our residence, we can hear it. The problem is, is once in north Dunsmere are horns, they're, I mean, excuse me, they're sirens, they're not the horn. Here in the central, in this building, the fire department, it's a, it's a air-driven horn. And it's gonna work when the power goes out, the others won't. So that's kind of the concern that's brought up to our attention, is that can people hear it? Will they work when the power goes out? And so we just want to meet with Chief Padilla and just talk through those issues.
You're promoting Code Red?
Absolutely. And you all saw the emails from Jason Vella that now Code Red can text to get on too. So I'm meeting with Jason Vella next week just to get a better and broader background on what he's doing and to talk to him. And I'm also meeting with Sheriff Loki to talk about how we can maybe pull together a stakeholder meeting in Dunsmere so we can all get prepared for potential evacuation, no matter what it is. It's a wildfire or a spill or whatever. So I'm trying to meet with everybody individually that I can and then work with you and hopefully the new manager to really get the new city manager involved in making some decisions on what we want our next public forum to be. Either maybe a stakeholder meeting with all of our partners or is it a public forum that we do some more education with our residents on? So, because we can do maybe one more event by the end of this year. So we're just looking into the audible alert, we know there's no money. And maybe if we think we need a new audible alert system that works when the power goes out and we need grant funding, I suppose that's a possibility. But it's just been brought to our attention that there's some concerns about that. We can usually hear it in the north part of town, but people have mentioned that they can't hear. So we're investing. And then I talked to you about our next event. One of the other things in terms of educating the public and our seniors, especially after Steve's presentation, I also want to meet with Public Health up in Siskiyou County. They've got a brand-new form now, I don't know if you've seen it, but Julie shared it with me. It's a two-page form where a senior or a disabled individual, anyone that needs specific assistance or help, it's similar to the Good Neighbor Survey, it's much more detailed. And so I'm trying to see, and OES also has a form that's posted on Siskiyou County website. So I'm trying to see, can we coordinate all of this and just find out who's doing what? And then see if we can link it to what we're doing. And then the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance, when we approved it from our end, it went to the planning commission. I've heard there might be some issues with it, but I hope not. We are here to support that. We'll go to the next planning official meeting on August 14th. And we'll be supportive of it or help to answer questions. And if we need to get some other people there, we're happy to do that.
Do you want a quick question?
The planning commission already did review and approve the format of that ordinance. It was then sent to the city attorney before being brought to the city council. The city attorney is holding it, he has a couple of questions, haven't gotten that response. It was supposed to be on for First Rhythm tonight, but we're waiting for the city to hear.
Okay, oh, thank you very much, thanks for that clarification. And then obviously that ordinance underscores the need to do more green waste. And I know you all have been talking about this, it's very important to you. And we don't have, our resources are limited. Mike Delavanna is our lead on our green waste. And Mike and Paul have met with Randy, our city manager. And so they've been working on the details to actually work with Diane at Clemens to have a green waste disposal event as soon as we possibly can. So they're working on the details so our residents can bring brush, tree limbs, weeds, leaves, green waste. The idea is to have it take place at the ballpark parking lot, utilizing one of the city's large containers. We'll obviously need cooperation with Public Works for the use of the container. The DPAC will provide volunteers that sign off on the appropriate consent. And we can assist with the promotion of the event. We anticipate the date, we might be able to get it by August 24th, that's Saturday, August 24th. There's already a bad communication with Mike Rodriguez in terms of that date. So we're hoping that'll work. Mike and Paul will be working with Randy on the details of that. And then we just, we want to encourage more participation in our meetings. So any of you are, or some of you are welcome and you all can't come, but we want to encourage people in the community to participate in our meetings because it's a tough issue and we need, we need as much participation from our local residents as possible. Any questions?
Thank you, yep, any quick clarifying questions before we move on? Councilmember Erk.
Well, one is the Dunsmere Fire Safety Council, do we have one of those or we're going without one of those?
So I know that you were working on that a while ago, but it's typically, fire safety councils are separate entity from cities. So the DPAC, if they want to coordinate with the fire safety council, they can, but it's not charged to DPAC to create one.
No, but the leadership was taken by Chief Padilla. There were a couple of preliminary meetings. And different cities do it different ways. If we don't have one, that's okay. I just want to know whether, how many groups besides the city council itself are trying to deal with disasters and emergencies?
That's probably a question for Chief Padilla then.
Well, I can answer some of that because I've met with Chief and the one person that's available for the Fire Safety Council, and that's Daniel Prele, who's a forester. And he's trying to do some work in this area. We don't really have a functioning Fire Safety Council. We as the DPAC aren't taking it on. But I myself as an individual am working with the chief to see if I can help them, increase their capacity. I'm trying to recommend that we look at combining with Dale and Giselle up in Mount Shasta, that we look at regional fire safety community. Plus, California Fire Safety Council is going to hire a regional person that will help. I don't know where they'll be located yet, but hopefully there'll be a regional person up here. I don't know if you've heard anything about it.
They usually station them in Eureka and Fort Worth, or they station them down in Redding. That would be the best situation.
Redding would be bad.
Yeah, that'd be the best situation, but they haven't decided yet.
Yeah, okay, well, I sure hope that they consider our rural areas that year.
Siskiyou County, they have a hard, the state has a hard time figuring out if we're the north coast, if we're like northern central valley, or like we're the North Sierras. So, yeah, we get to talk some more. Councilmember Erk, do you have another question?
Just a question or an offer. In terms of getting the information out and wanting to have more people attend the meeting, there might be a way to actually have those recorded and broadcast if you're interested. So if you think you might want to do that, let me know.
Okay, I don't know if we're ready to be broadcast yet, you know, we're getting our feet wet.
Sure.
And, but...
Thank you for your diligence, I truly do. I think this council made the right choice if we get there.
Councilmember Erk, do you have another question?
Well, I sort of to the council member, very important. The last meeting that our committee had, there were two members of the public, they weren't really members of the public. It was myself and Planning Commissioner Warren. There was not a single member of the public that felt it was important.
Well, Michael came, Michael Bush came.
Michael Bush, I apologize. Michael was in the house.
And Daniel came too, so we actually had a big group that time.
But the point remains, and to me, I mean, I sort of feel uncomfortable with the notion, Madam Mayor, you're extremely knowledgeable about FEMA. And so Commissioner Warren's letter is untrue and nobody should freak out. But on behalf of the city of Dunsmere, trying to avoid paradise, what are the three big issues? What are the things? What are the things we need to be doing? One, two, three. And we don't have the staff, we don't have anyone applying for grants. We have an excellent fire chief and our volunteers, but it's convenient to wait for the new city manager. But I think we need to keep working on engaging the citizens and the businesses and actually getting the work done. I love the Green Waste Initiative, thank you very much. I love you.
Okay, great. And that's just.
I volunteer too.
And that's just the start, you know, we can't just do one day and follow that. We wanna really look at long-term, and I know that's important to you all too, but if we just get a start and we get more volunteers, we can get volunteers with trucks, some people don't have trucks and they can't haul or brush, you know, we can just keep building on it. We have one event and we can keep building on it. That's one of the priorities that we need to clean up.
Yeah, clean up.
Even, we need to help the city clean up their property too. There's, you know, all those old picnic tables behind the wrecked building, we wanna clean all that up. And there's places that we need to clean up. So we can do it. We can do this. Thank you.
So really quick, the airport committee met last week, I believe, if it was. Thank you. So the airport committee met last week to discuss items that were then referred to the city council in closed session. We also discussed just different items that are coming up. Just to clarify for council, the FAA grants or grants that we weren't chosen for this year, those are still viable. So those are basically on the table at FAA and they can be awarded still. So it's not like you pass or fail, you're denied and you have to now reapply. So right now, the direction the committee has given is that we're going to try to wait and reapply for those funds to expand the apron and then do the airport, finish the airport layout plan and then the pavement. So we have those grants still on the table, they just did not get funded this round. So we're hoping that that changes in the next year.
One other thing too is, and this goes back to what Mr. Kaiser talked about in the past, we're also back exploring the idea of being able to put a solar farm out there too. So that's more long-term, but at the same time, that could be part of the equation down the line.
Yep, so we got together and did look at short-term as well as long-term ways to make that property more viable, putting most of our energy in short-term, short-term low-hanging fruit at this point. Council member.
Well, as a member of the finance committee, are we gonna get a business plan and are we gonna get a budget? What are we supposed to budget for the upcoming fiscal year? I've looked at the minutes, and in fact, the city attorney said, the airport isn't an enterprise fund. The airport depends on the general fund. How many dollars are we gonna spend in this year, 1920, out of our general fund on the airport? All the issues about owing close to $100,000 to the general fund, the issues about us being liable, bringing it along in the airport, it leaves a huge hole in our budget if these issues, all of them delineated by the finance committee, they have to be built.
Yep, correct. So we'll have short-term and long-term solutions for those. Is there any other questions about the airport?
Yeah, there's a question. When do we get the airport layout plan final, finalized by that?
I haven't checked.
We haven't heard.
Yeah.
It's still the FAA's order.
Yeah, we haven't gotten an update on that one. But that's, we'll let you guys know as soon as we get that.
Have you got a date on it?
There's no set date, but the staff of the FAA turned over at, in the Sacramento office. So allegedly, there's a new person working on it who has already sent back comments to the.
Council.
James.
Kaufman.
Name of Kaufman, Jim Harris from Kaufman Associates. So they're doing some updates and some changes. If this, fine, it should have been presented to the council, I'm not sure why it wasn't. But again, this is what you are, have agreed to as construction projects for the next 10 years in the airport layout plan. So it includes not only the capital improvement projects, the FAA is gonna be improving, but also the ACIP, which is the capital improvement side for Caltrans. And both of those have to be consistent in order for you to be able to apply for grants to do those projects. So to answer your question, the ACIP has been approved by Caltrans. Caltrans has approved the ALP, the airport layout plan. It is to FAA and it should have been approved already.
We're just waiting.
It's only a matter of months. Hopefully.
It could be in a day.
Okay. Well, so when it does come, could you bring it back to the council? At that point, I think it would be very important for the airport committee or the finance committee, whoever takes it on, whoever the council signs it to, to really develop a business plan or solve and see within the next two years or so.
I believe the airport committee discussed getting a very airport layout plan with the long-term and short-term objectives and solutions for that, so I think we'll get started on that.
Thank you.
And in the short-term, you need four to eight thousand dollars a year to balance the budget, plus an additional eight thousand dollars a year if you're gonna do the $150,000 grants, because that's your five and a half percent match. And that's what we've been looking at. We haven't written that up yet, but that's what we hope to propose as we're doing that. And again, hopefully income from revenue sources already existent and then hopefully revenue from either a solar project or some other project at the property outlet, the airport. And then we'll meet those numbers or exceed them would be nice.
But it is a five percent?
A five and a half percent. Caltrans is at four and a half percent, so it is essentially a 10% match to the FAA grant. Except for the two, three million dollars that you were wanting for to repave the runway and to repave.
Right.
The apron, that had no match, that was just a FAA grant.
Okay.
Which that's the one that's still on the table and will get reassessed in the next round?
That one's still on the table, plus the $150,000 for the engineering for the apron. You've only done engineering for the runway at this point. And that would require the eight thousand match.
For the apron?
Yep. For the engineering. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, any other committee reports from council members or council member, any other committee reports from the public?
Well, the newly constituted Public Works Committee is awaiting its public members. And we have sidewalks later in the agenda, but if it's gonna be council member Kaiser or myself, we'll probably have an informal meeting sooner rather than later.
How about the first part of next week after group fest?
Okay. All right, seeing none, the committee reports will move into approval of the minutes. Right now, would you like them, the minutes approved separately or can we do them at the same time?
Together, if that works.
All right, so.
Sorry, I have one more announcement.
Oops, sorry.
The finance committee will be meeting August 7th.
Well, 7th, you're right.
7th. August 7th. There are two very important items on the agenda. First will be timeframe for moving forward with the TUT increase. And the second will be community promotions, funding, will be interviewing and receiving information from all the applicants. So if you guys are interested in either of those, you can talk to, and I'd like you to come there, show your support for one or many of those programs. And also come to understand the financial situation of Dunsmere relative to those programs.
Did you get that date, August 7th? Did you get the time? There you go.
So to be clear, so everyone understands, if you're looking for what used to be called TUT money, August 7th, finance committee, that's where you have to be if you wanted to play in that game.
Make your pitch.
All right. Seeing, do you have a question on that?
Well, yeah, just because I'm involved with several of the applicants, none of them are wealthy, they all need to know whether their budget is gonna get contributions from the city of Dunsmere or not. So next week, we have this session.
Yes.
And then do we present recommendations to the city council that become part of our budget and if so, when?
So the timeframe will be, first of the meeting, we'll first discuss the TUT increase. That is the most pressing issue facing Dunsmere, which is growing deficit in this general fund.
Right.
The second, we will welcome all the people who have received community promotions in the past who have applied for it this year. I know that they've voiced their support many times, I'm very appreciative of that. But we'll go through some official questions, begin a procedure that will hopefully take us into many years of stable application process. After, now let me count it one way, you'll give us information. After that, the finance committee, among the committee members, no public comment throughout, but the committee members will discuss and come to some consensus on a recommendation per dollar amounts for a budget amendment to the city council. At the very next city council meeting, because it's very important, the city council will then take up the finance committee's recommendation. At that point, the city council can either adopt it as recommended or amend it, and there'll be an opportunity for public comment with the city council as well. By the time you have more than three minutes to explain what you're doing and have a little bit more of a back and forth, we'll be at the finance committee.
So this will be on our next city council agenda. Finance committee recommendation.
Pending any other.
I would say no, I think.
Oh, not on the 15th, but the.
I don't see any reason why it couldn't be the 15th, but let's wait and see where we end the 7th.
So pending any other things that could come up.
If the finance committee has their recommendation, I see no reason why we should delay any further.
Okay. I'm happy to be here on the 15th.
Well, that part is what we're starting to think about.
You get to.
We could get the whole thing.
The other thing is, I was just thinking of having our city manager on board too, you know, who waited one more meeting.
I think we could do this without.
Okay.
You might agree to it.
But, so anyway, so we've answered questions about the committee reports. All right, we're gonna move back to the minutes. So approval of the minutes for July 9th, 2019, and July 18th, 2019.
I make the motion to approve both meetings of the July 9th and the July 18th meetings.
A second?
All right, there's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the meeting of July 9th, 2019, and July 18th, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, minutes are approved.
Madam Mayor.
Now, we are in consent agenda, so you would like to pull an item.
I have no problem consenting, making a motion to adopt the consent agenda if we are allowed.
So just really quick on the purpose of the consent agenda, it means that we're not gonna change anything presented, if you want.
There's an error.
Yeah, so if you want.
Consent, you just want one more closure.
You want one more closure?
No. You guys already asked for the closure. If you read the wording, Dunsmere Avenue at Spruce and Cedar Streets and Pine Street at Sacramento Avenue and Shasta Avenue, but if you look at the map, which is what I would do if I'm blown up, you're barricading your cones. Everything has got a barricade, except I drove that. There's no barricade. If you look at it, you could drive right into the backside of the stage.
Okay, so it's just, it's an amendment to the map.
Oh, an amendment, yeah, you gotta put the little X's there so the people.
I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to talk about.
I'm the master of road closures, there's no X's.
So the X's are meant to be there, that's in the original proposal, so we'll just go with that. Okay, cool. I thought you were gonna change the whole name, that's why I was going.
No, just that there was a bit of a comms issue.
Okay, perfect. So we just amended the map.
Okay, so then I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
So just for a reiteration, the consent agenda items tonight are 12A, check register for July 19th, 2019, July 26th, 2019. Item B is authorizing the commitment to the Leaky California Cities statewide local streets and roads needs assessment funding project. And item C, approval of road closures of Dunsmere Avenue at Spruce Street and Cedar Street and Pine Street at Sacramento Avenue and Shasta Avenue, the use of the parking lot north of City Hall and electrical connections for the September 20th through 22nd, Chamber of Congress event, the steam pump festival. So that's what the motion has been put forward to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
So it's a motion by Council member Kaiser, second by Council member Deutsch. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, just one question. What is the state of Dunsmere, Chief of Commerce? That is, as I understand it from the earlier report, Mr. Digges is no longer.
He's still working this, he still cares and it's still working, it's still on, everything's going.
Volunteering.
But we.
Volunteering.
So it's volunteers.
I mean, is the chamber viable enough to pull this off?
Yeah, you got Sidney Forman and me and Bruce and you guys, we guys.
It's gonna happen.
I'm gonna win this steam pump day watch.
So there's a motion on the table to approve consent agenda items A through C. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all those in favor of approving consent agenda items A, B, and C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Now move on to item 13, public hearings, we have none, so we'll move on to old business, which is item 14A, which is the adoption of resolution amending the city of Dunsmere protocols. My understanding of this item is we were supposed to have prepared a resolution at the last meeting to approve the change in the agenda format. And we did not, so a resolution has been required.
And that is all that happened this time. Resolution on top of your protocols, and protocols include the amendments you made in the agenda process. In addition, there were a couple of titles that were updated and that's it.
Right. Is there any clarifying questions at this time before we move to public comment?
Yes.
Are?
Well, if either you or the city manager in the amended protocols, where are the changes or what changed? I didn't wanna read all the thirty pages again, so.
Ninety-nine.
All right, so on page 38.
Thirty-eight.
So on page 38, we took out one of the items of, took out outside committee reports. We moved council and staff comments to after public comments, so it's now number five. And then we added committee reports back after council and staff member comments. I believe you had brought up a clarification point, which we didn't, I think, fix that clarification, it was dramatical, and that was all that was changed.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions before I open this up for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll open this up for public comment if anyone would like to come up and discuss a resolution to amend our council protocols, the agenda format. Seeing none, move into discussion, council member Kaiser.
Ms. Julie, what's the number on this resolution?
Nineteen.
If there is no discussion.
Doesn't look like it.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2019, whereas the city council and the city Dunsmere adopt protocols recommended by the ad hoc committee and public giftwood. Summarize.
By title only.
By title only.
All right.
Oh, yeah, by title only.
All right, there's a motion by council member Kaiser, second by council member Brian. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all those in favor of approving resolution 2019-19 by title only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
That's very, we give ourselves a big hand because it's been a long time, we finally have some protocols.
Well, we already have.
But they're back, now they're there.
We're amending them, but yes. We have, we have a process.
Hey, we're doing good, we're.
We're getting there.
We're getting there.
As I understand it, there's a lot of hard work of former mayor Spurlock and former mayor.
Hopefully.
But it took that long.
Yeah. Point, cheers to them as well.
Cheers to them as well, good.
All right, well now move into item number 15, which is new business. Item A is introduction of ordinance amending fat, oil, and grease program requirements.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. State law was some time ago amended prior to every agency have a quality ordinance. The city, back in 2015, they adopted a one-sentence provision that basically people in town should not put fats, oils, or grease into the sewer system. Didn't provide a lot of opportunity for enforcement or any hammer in case it was determined that a particular source was clogging or clogging backups in the sewers. This ordinance was prepared by, with the help of the case, and it provides all the current fiddles and whistles, listings for not only doing inspections, but requiring people to put the appropriate apparatus within their restaurants in most cases or other places where fats, oils, and grease could be generated. We have had backups, there were 15 backups in the last twelve months. So this will provide us, again, this is first reading, we still have to have second reading before it can be adopted, but it'll make us compliant with state law and also with the request of the state water ward that's considering our current grant requests for sewer improvement. request of the State Water Ward that's considering our current grant requests for sewer improvements.
All right, are there any clarifying questions for staff?
Question?
Councilmember Deutsch.
So what is this going to mean for the people out there, in terms of the businesses and all of that?
The businesses are already supposed to have a, in most cases, a company that comes in and takes this product out of the system, because there should be a separator where this goes into the system.
Like a trap?
A grease trap.
Yeah.
A grease trap.
A grease trap, and then that's normally put into some type of container, a barrel, and then a company will remove this periodically. What we haven't had in the past is any ability to go to these people and say, show us the records that the company actually removed this product. This will provide us the opportunity to measure and catalog who's doing what.
How do we educate the people to read that, in case they don't know?
They don't.
So they don't...
Yeah, this is, I believe this has been state requirement, state law, for probably close to twelve years.
Twelve, so they help, yeah, and the county helped people come by and talk to them about all this, too. It's just, Dunsborough didn't have the authority to enforce what we're supposed to enforce, and without that, we seem to be lacking any eyes of the state.
Are there any other clarifying questions before I move to public comment?
Ms. Julie, what's the ordinance number?
It'll be 562.
562, thank you.
Any other questions before we move to public comment? Seeing none, I will now open public comment on the first reading of the ordinance amending our fats, oil, and grease program requirements. No takers. All right, so...
We lost the talk reason.
We will now close the public comment for the first reading of the ordinance. So basically, your motion would be motion to approve the first reading and move to the second.
I make a motion...
Can we get a motion first to read by number and title only?
Okay.
I make a motion to read ordinance number 562 by number and title only.
Then there's, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion at second, is there any discussion on the motion at hand, Councilmember Art?
Well, I am all for this, because...
Your house flooded.
Number one, which resulted in a single-figure claim against the City of Dunsborough that ended. But because the city and the county have been lax in their enforcement, there will be a number of restaurants in the City of Dunsborough, they are the biggest dischargers of fog, and it may require a significant investment by them, including having to apply to the City of Dunsborough, it's in the ordinance. So having gone to the DPAC meeting and talking about green waste disposal, when that ordinance comes to the city, we're going to be talking about carrots and sticks. We hope to offer carrots for you to dispose of your fog, and to dispose of your green waste, but if you refuse to, there'll be a series of sticks. I hope the city does everything it can, including using economic development funds, to not put anybody out of business in its zeal to be compliant with this new ordinance.
All right, is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the reading? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the motion to, I believe it's read the ordinance number and title, by number and title only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries, and so is that all you need for the first reading, or?
You should at this point read the number and title, and then ask for motion to pass first reading.
Okay. Would you like to read it, or would you like someone else to read it?
Me?
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dave.
Okay, an ordinance of the City Council, ordinance number 562, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dunsborough, California, providing for implementation, administration, and enforcement of fats, oils, and grease source control program. By title only.
Now, a motion to pass first reading would be approved.
I make a motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the first reading, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance number 562 by title only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that okay? What do you need me to say? You didn't, you didn't provide me a staff report with the nice...
Yeah, it's all your fault.
You, it's, you know...
It was a staff report, I don't...
Did I hear?
I, that is true.
You gotta spell it out for us, if we need to say the right, if we need to say the right words.
I came back early.
Julie's rattling a staff report.
All right, well, please...
What do you want?
Your first motion was just to introduce the ordinance by title only, so you didn't have to read full ordinance. The second one is for the first reading.
Okay, so it's just all those in favor of passing the first reading of ordinance number 562, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
I'm gonna throw that staff report page out.
You gotta map it out for us.
You guys have any, if you're coming?
We'll now move to other new business, item fifteen, the presentation and review of public works supervisor, initial recommendation for 2019, 2020 sidewalk projects.
Thank you, one of the comments from the council in previous meetings is to do what we can to do forward on sidewalk projects. The public works supervisor has put together his list of what he considers to be projects that are doable in the next year. We would not propose going out and doing these all the way, or right away. As monies come in and the revenue sources are realized, then do as much as we can. These projects are separated, they're not all in one place, there's probably no economy by having them all done at once, so that's why they're being proposed this way. If you have other projects you'd like to consider, and it doesn't have to be tonight, if you want to think about it, and we can bring it back at the next meeting of the old business to amend this list, this is his initial take.
Are there clarifying questions at this time?
I'll go first.
Councilmember Brian?
The gas tax should produce, it's predicted to produce something close to twenty-five thousand. This number is significantly less than that, it's ten thousand two hundred. I know the council, very long time ago, directed to spend, or at least prioritize sidewalk replacement projects with the gas tax. I know that the public works supervisor at the time, at this initial take on it, we need to do some stopgap repairs in roads as well, and other important... Is this a reflection of a portion of that?
That twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand, or, I guess, comes out of this, is that labor, the contracted labor with Siskiyou County Public Works Department, or does this labor include our public works?
Includes our guys. Our guys are not in the cost, this would just be the contracted out cost, our guys are already in the budget.
Well, that's what I mean, is their labor put towards the twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's not factored in?
No, I mean, they are budgeted in the budget and paid for, not as a part of this project. So if they work on this project, you're still going to pay them out of the general fund budget, but not out of your sidewalk project.
Councilmember Brian?
I know that when Mark was working on this, that he had explored the idea of hiring temp workers to come in and do the actual labor work with supervision by public works, is that still being considered or not?
I have to ask Bill, I, he's considering everything, I'm sure. I'm not aware of that.
Just to clarify, are we going to account for the rest of that twenty-five thousand dollars elsewhere, is that vested towards projects other than sidewalks?
This is his initial list of projects, so as more monies come in, there will be additional lists of projects, or projects that other people come up with for him to evaluate and add on.
That could change the priorities of what is listed.
Absolutely, it's the council's priority list.
I have a sense of that, what Matthew Brian here is saying is that, where's the other twelve, is that what's in your mind?
Yeah.
Thirteen, thirteen, fifteen.
It is, the other twelve is not going to recommend it at this time, this is his initial report.
So was I right in that question?
Yeah, could he perhaps prepare something with, something like twenty in mind, given they have to spend it on transportation?
Well, and the other thing that Bill is presenting to me is, the list changes, I mean, there's damage, and then all of a sudden, there's new damage, and one project that was a priority isn't as much a priority as another one because something happened. So if he got these done, and then the rest of the money comes in, he'll come up with a list that's current as of that moment for priorities.
I have more, but I'll save it for discussion.
Okay, are there any other clarifying questions, Councilmember Art?
Well, the last sentence of your memo, staff has tried to apply score sidewalk criteria in evaluating possible projects. To nominate all projects under that criteria would be an exhaustive list, and well beyond known resources at this time. I mean, to me, this is why we're trying to create a public works committee, because it seems like for a small city like Dunsborough, that depends on our mature, that we would use the score criteria, and whether it's paid to our public works department, we would wash the area, and worst first, and then figure out the budget, the contractor. I love that Brian Wilson's out there with his cement sacks and his cement mixer, he filled in a couple of potholes in front of my yard, but really, it, I don't...
Just clarifying questions.
So clarifying is how much would it cost to actually do a priority list that would meet score criteria?
Score criteria is that any lift or separation in excess of three quarters of an inch is a risk liability.
Exactly so.
And if we went around town and applied that, you pretty much, almost every sidewalk.
But are we better off knowing that or not knowing that?
Actually, I think Bill did that study at least a year ago.
You should, you should have a sidewalk and pavement plan.
He did a couple of years ago.
I'm sorry, I should have answered that earlier, but it'd be popping.
Clarifying question?
So we have to move to public comment before we move into discussion, so do you have any clarifying? Okay, we'll now open this up for public comment, is there anyone who would like to give public comment on the recommendations for 1920 sidewalk projects?
Okay, Michael Bush, Public Works Avenue. I read pages sixty-six, seven, and eight, and my question is on the list, Bill's list, on page sixty-seven, which recommends five of these. Now, the question, I'm unclear, maybe the City Manager and Brian answered it, but my main thing that I'm unclear about is there, there's the list, is it funded? That's what I'm unclear about, is it funded in the budget, are you waiting for SBC money? There's the list, is it funded, that's what I'm trying to understand. At this time, as we're, as we're standing right now, can they get started?
So again, it's just me and public comment, and then we may address that in discussion, so we're not going to go back and forth at this time. If you have any other questions, please feel free to post them at this time.
Okay, my comment is, I don't understand whether the funding is available, that's my comment, and that's my only comment, maybe you'll pop that over in discussion.
Okay. Thank you, are there any other public comments related to the 2019, 2020 sidewalk project prioritization? All right, seeing none, we'll close into discussion, would you like to cover the question?
Well, the budget is a paper document, and it is a plan for the future, it is anticipating revenues that we will receive. As pointed out by the Chair of the Finance Committee, the bulk of the monies for sidewalk work are to come from gas tax funds. We receive those monies as from the different categories of gas tax at different times during the year. When those receipts are in, and they total this amount, we'll come back to the council and say, if the list hasn't changed, these are the projects we're going to do.
We could even, if the gas tax is fairly stable and it being something, we could potentially spend in advance, knowing that we'll come.
But right now, there is thirteen thousand dollars, and we're ready to spend it, right?
Correctly, yeah.
So what he's asking, I believe, is, are we ready to start doing it, or do we have to wait for some money to come in, or are we just start working right now?
There's no, nothing waiting, no waiting to go.
I would recommend waiting, if you want to do it right now, get all these done.
I'm just saying, in terms of, the money is there, whenever we want to start work, we can start work, right?
Well, there's a general fund reserve.
On a, yes, from reserves, on a cash basis, or this year, the cash is not received by the city at this moment in time. As those dollars are received from the debt from the state in gas tax monies, we'll report back to you that the money is there to do these projects.
Do you understand that, Mr. Bush?
So I think we wait?
We're waiting for the tax to come in, as soon as the gas tax comes in, we start spending it on these projects.
Right, so we, as for right now, we wait.
Right now, we wait, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the back and forth, but what we're actually saying, too, is we could start now, because we anticipate this money coming in, that is the other option as well.
There are terrible sorts of money.
You would be using the reserves out of your general fund, and then we would reimburse the general fund reserves.
Is that legal?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
That's basically what every other city does, so for example, any other sidewalk project going on right now, they wait till they get it, gas tax is a pretty for sure thing, that's easy.
Especially in July and August, especially in July and August, when the new fiscal year is in play.
Yeah.
So we could.
Were we in discussion?
Yes.
I would like to perhaps propose, I know there's a lot of needs in terms of infrastructure, not even talking about the roads at this point, maybe the money is needed for the roads, I know we don't have a lot, given the running deficit, but if we can spend twenty-five thousand dollars on repairing our sidewalks, I would propose that we consider really emphasizing the highest areas of liability, and aesthetically, the most enjoyed areas for population, you know. We're pretty much taking this exact map, and say, from City Hall or the pass, up through Astor near and the brewery, Ethel Avenue, that's the heart of our town, if we could possibly apply as much as possible towards, even if it's a couple-year project, fixing the sidewalks perfectly within that stretch, so at least we have a center to build out from. And I said, we all know a very, very high percentage of people that visit our town walk those streets, but not necessarily others, so if we begin there, we'll be spending our money most efficiently when it comes to liability protection.
My recommendation is, is that any next steps be taken on by the public works committee, and they can take it and start massage-ing it from here.
Could they perhaps present a plan of twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, the fifteen extra, including ways to really hit Dunsborough Avenue, to make it, I guess, safer and more beautiful for all our citizens?
I'd say more safe.
Yeah, well, the recommendation that has been recommended is to move to accept, I make a motion, to move to accept from the preliminary list provided by public works supervisor, and direct the work be scheduled. Here it says, as revenues allocated for these projects are realized, I'd like to reword that, to be scheduled as City Manager and public works supervisor seem fit, and work can start immediately, being paid back by the general fund after the taxes, the gas tax are received.
I second the motion. As much as those work are to be worked out down the line.
So that's not necessarily what Councilmember Brian was talking about, is that, is that insufficient motion for you to go forward?
Okay, if I understand the motion, the motion is to go ahead and do this project as quickly as possible.
May I introduce an alternative motion, perhaps?
You could request to amend it.
Yeah, just to amend it, could we also direct staff to prepare an analysis of what the remaining gas tax, predicted gas tax amount, what that could produce in terms of improving the safety of Dunsborough Avenue between City Hall and Spruce Street?
I would think that would be the public...
I would second.
Well, I'm just saying, how the public works can bring back to us, how, what projects could be included to improve that, given that?
I answer the question, candidate, if you're making a motion, you...
Give me a second, writing everything down, because I know you're trying.
Do you have to amend it to start?
So would you, would you preempt amend your motion to also include Councilmember Brian's, which is also to have public works prepare a list of sidewalk projects to repair Dunsborough Avenue?
From City Hall down to Spruce Street.
The heart.
From City Hall.
Yeah, I admitted to, to come back to the list for the improvement of the heart, heart of town, we all know what we're talking about.
I'll amend my second as well.
Okay, so there has been friendly amendment to the motion. So right now, the motion as presented is a motion to accept the preliminary list and schedule repair as city manager and Public Works Supervisors can get to it, but sooner rather than later, as well as a motion to prepare a sidewalk improvement list for Dunsmere Avenue from City Hall to the heart.
And that's the best.
And the works will start as soon as they can get to it and we get reimbursed, general fund gets reimbursed from the gas tax once it's received. Other words, work can start by our way.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Well, I've been listening around a little talking. There is an elephant in the room here. And that elephant is that many of the sidewalks that need to be replaced are heaved due to street trees. And as far as I know, if we go by the ordinance, the private owner of the property has an obligation to remediate street tree and sidewalk programs. And for all the time I've been in Dunsmere, I didn't ask for the tree to be planted. I had nothing to do with it. We now have a memo that proposes recommended tree replacement at the following location, blah, blah, blah. But I do think we need to be clear with property owners. If I have a conflict of interest, I have a conflict. I went through this with Pops. And as it worked out, city manager Brandon had said, okay, here's the deal. One time for you, Peter, we'll get rid of the tree. You put it in papers, we don't want a new tree. That was my option. But as far as I know, we have no policy on, is the city taking over the sidewalks? Is the city taking over planting and maintaining the trees? Do the sidewalks get replaced at city expense? The property owner needs to do nothing. And we got reports from different cities, base engineering says Alchester does it this way or Wheat does it this way. But as far as I know, we have never resolved that issue.
So per the state of California government code, it is a quasi-private space. And so cities by law can go in and require property owners to maintain the sidewalks per their regulations at any time. And that means installing them per gutter sidewalk. So for example, the city has the ability in the state code to ignore Dunsmere and say, you now all have to put in per gutter sidewalk, regardless if that makes sense or not. That's just part of the state code. What most cities do, especially smaller cities, is they do try to get grants to repair them in the hard parts, like what we're doing now, as much as possible because it would be incredibly burdensome to the property owners if we were to go and start doing those letters to everyone. That also costs the city a lot of money to follow up. How are we going to do that? Cities Milwaukee went through and basically just put them in and leased everyone's property. Didn't even give you the chance to repair it yourself because they didn't want you to. Different state, but that has happened in a lot of different communities. So it is quasi-public-private. If the city wanted to be very aggressive, we could just start issuing a letter now and make people do that. But that's probably not.
You used the word aggressive. I have to say, as a mayor. So, oh, Peter's, by the way, Peter, I commend you for what you did on your own down there on the sidewalks. You yourself made that little piece of Dunsmere look beautiful. I commend you on that. Thank you. It wasn't Peter's fault and I'm glad that he was given the opportunity. Do I want the tree back or not? So my question to you, Madam Mayor and Council, is let's be real. These people are dealing with trees that the city put in. We put these trees in. We made these trees, are screwing up the pipes, the sidewalks, the roads. But yet we're telling the owners of the properties, you've got to fix it. We done it. We picked, that whole program was wrong, the wrong trees. They need to be different kind of trees and different kind of roots. They need to be in basins. So now we're going to throw all that on the owners? I realize the city don't have money.
I'm just giving context for what the state law says. I'm not saying that we are having to do that. That's not the decision in front of us tonight. I just wanted to explain to you, Councilmember Art, here is actually what it is at the state level.
Well, let's take a look at this paper. It's got some trees coming out.
Right, they're all downtown and they need to be done and we're not going to put that on the people. We're going to do it ourselves.
Correct, that's part of the program. So whenever we go in and replace a piece of sidewalk that has a bad tree that's lifting it up, we take the tree out and either don't put it back in or we replace it with a more appropriate tree.
We had gone through, we had gone through, and I think it was a year or two ago, and there was a study done and by, who is, what's her name, like?
Candace.
Candace Miller, right. And so there was a list of trees that are acceptable and she came up with a proposal. We went through all that part of it before, so that's part of our record.
Correct.
But the point is, who's going to take care of those trees?
And is that on private property?
And if that's the case, then let's have a resolution that solves the private property owner. The city is going to plant the trees, prune the trees, maintain the trees, and accept liability for the trees.
Well, I think what the council is saying is the state mandates certain relationship.
The mayor is saying potentially the private property owner is on the hook.
No, they are. That's the state.
So does it mean we have to do that?
So again, that's, if you would like to schedule a future agenda item to discuss street trees, we may do that. But right now, we are on a motion at hand, which is the motion to accept the preliminary list and to schedule that as soon as possible as monies become, are available and then reimburse ourselves with the gas tax. And then a motion for Public Works to prepare a plan for repairing sidewalks on Dunsmere Avenue in the heart of downtown. So is there a discussion on the motion at hand? We may schedule a future discussion for street trees. I apologize for getting off topic. I was just trying to be helpful and explain that that's a state requirement.
Trees are bad, so.
But just, there's significant liability issues that are totally unaddressed. There's significant budget issues that are totally unaddressed in this memo.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the item at hand?
I'd just like to make clear for this subject and all subjects, when we get something here in the council, it's because it's what we have at the moment. And everything that you were bringing up can be brought up as subsequent thing. We only have one thing on here is that is to talk about this list. The idea we're going to look at trees and everything else down the line. We don't have time to do that tonight. It's not on the agenda. It's one thing.
So again, we're coming back to the motion at hand. Thank you. So again, we're on the motion at hand. So if it's a discussion on motion to accept the preliminary list and move forward with repairing sidewalks and getting the list for repairing Dunsmere Avenue in the heart of downtown. If it's about the trees or liability, we will schedule a future item.
The Chair of our Finance Committee has made an obvious point. We're uncertain as to how many dollars we have to spend for mediating this issue. We're uncertain when the dollars come. Is it targeted to worst first? Is it targeted to score? No.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to accept the preliminary list and move forward with repairs as soon as possible and to have Public Works prepare a list of sidewalks to be repaired for Dunsmere Avenue, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. My apologies for that, to get off topic here a little bit. But we'll get back on track with item number fifteen C, authorization for mayor to execute letter to Union Pacific requesting status of inquiry about parking lot on Sacramento Avenue.
Thank you. The city made efforts back in 2016, and I think even before that, to talk with Union Pacific about obtaining the parking lot that is not a part of public parking on Sacramento Avenue and not adjacent to the Amtrak station. It was brought up recently by Councilmembers. We should make the effort again. I put it in the agenda. I have a draft letter that the mayor could sign. I'll read it for you if you want, but it's essentially a repeat of what Bryce Craig set back in 2016. The question is, do you want to pursue it again?
All right, are there any clarifying questions regarding the public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment on authorizing the mayor to execute a letter to Union Pacific requesting status of inquiry about parking lot on Sacramento Avenue? Seeing none, we'll now move into discussion. Is there any discussion on the item at hand?
Well, I spent a fair amount of time inspiring with former mayor Craig on both Mossbury Trail and trying to get Union Pacific to partner on any number of issues, including parking. And I feel like Union Pacific has long for being a partner to really not care. And I think it's incumbent on this city and its leadership to have a sit-down with our neighbor Union Pacific on any number of issues. Obviously, we coexist and we hope to be a liable community. The railroad owns significant property within our jurisdictional boundaries. What, just like the airport, what opportunities are there for both of us to prosper with the notion that rails go right next to the river and right through our town? So, yes, I hope you send a letter, but more importantly, we need to have a talk with Union Pacific. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on the item?
No. I propose.
Oh, no, go, go, no, you should do it.
I move that we.
You have to take a break.
Yeah, wait, come on, baby.
Authorize the mayor to execute letter to Union Pacific requesting status of inquiry about parking lot on Sacramento Avenue.
I second it.
All right, there's been a moment and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to execute a letter to Union Pacific requesting status of inquiry about the parking lot on Sacramento Avenue, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
And a little side note on that, you were about to also talk to him about any other thing you think one of the Canadian city, like you said, we've got to park our apartment. They should be manned up.
Well, and another little side bill is built seven to Omaha and Nebraska, Sacramento, California.
All right, all right, well now, item number sixteen, which is future agenda items. Is there any discussion on future agenda items?
Well, I was going to hand this out last night, but I understand we're between city managers. So I'll hand it out this time.
Every time he hands me a piece of paper, we make it suit.
And the focus of this is, my belief that the city of Dunsmere does not yet have a vision and a claim for our future. Paragraph one takes us back to the city's 2017-2018 budget. And city manager Brandon again stated, quote, "It is evident that the city of Dunsmere needs to develop a clear mission and vision statement and establish goals for limited resources to be allocated towards," close quote. My comment is, as we struggle with the city's 2019-20 budget, there's been no real progress on this essential need. This is one of the five things I wanted to do when I ran for office last year and took office in December. I've sort of let it go, Madam Mayor, because we're sort of at the bottom of our cycle. We don't have the staff, we don't have whatever we need to do this. But having spent as many hours as I have on the Finance Committee, it's evident, how do you construct a budget if you don't have a clear mission and vision statement and goals for limited resources? You can't do it. So we passed the new protocols. As I understand it, there's an agenda committee with rotating city council members. I've never been on it, but I can't wait. But whoever our agenda committee is, I don't think it's too early to start planning for. There was a failed attempt in 2014. I was there. There was a failed attempt last year. And I don't think we're doing the community a favor by not engaging in this.
All right, is there a second to adding that to a future agenda item?
Yeah.
All right, there's been a second to that future agenda.
Could you clarify what it is we're adding? Because I agree with a great deal of this. There's a lot in here, some we've been working on, some sadly, as you pointed out, we've been unable to make much progress in.
It's really following up on city manager Brandon's clear statement?
My understanding is, Councilmember Art would like to discuss developing a different mission and vision statement than what's already been approved.
But, Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Deutsch. We've already gotten a first and a second, so we'll discuss this at a future meeting, unless.
Okay, obviously, with that, then.
Okay, so basically, right now, with the future agenda items, we're just, if someone would like to add something to the agenda, basically protocols, another council member has to agree with them.
Well, I'd like to bring this question up if I could. In general, the idea that just bringing something up on the agenda is going to accomplish something, when we have a new city manager coming on board, we have all this going on, simply saying, let's put it on the agenda because I still feel things about it, doesn't make sense. We have a limited staff and sometime in the next several months, I'm sure the city manager, the new city manager, will sit and work out and work all this out. But the idea of bringing it to an agenda just because you feel something about it and nothing has changed, doesn't make sense.
So again, that's why we put in place a first and a second. So there's obviously at least two members who would like to discuss the topic at a future agenda. Just because something gets brought up right now during this item doesn't mean it will go on to the next agenda. There will have to be some fleshing out of the idea and a presentation. But there is interest in discussing, discussing, discussing this item. So that's where we're at. So there was a motion and a second for that item being added to a future agenda.
I'd just like to point out that almost all of what council, city council does is balance the immediate needs of a city towards direction with long-term vision and goal. And it's a difficult process that has a lot of friction and somebody didn't take the cover. So I do applaud Councilmember Art for always keeping us focused on the long-term goal of a very prosperous city.
Two other items, and I don't know if they require a gen treatment or deny. In the minutes that we approved, council member Deutsch advanced the idea that the city would put out an RFP, so we would have broadband through the old city halls.
So that is something that we agreed upon would be on a future agenda.
So we still have to put it on that or we decided we wouldn't do that?
It's already on the future agenda.
Yeah, so it was a consensus. So typically, if there's a general consensus for an item when we're discussing it, we'll put it on a future agenda item. This one, you had brought up, I don't think we brought up in a meeting before, so I can't determine if there's consensus or not. So I'll usually ask for a second at that point.
The other is, I have an impression that the city of Dunsmere has said, yes, we want to hire a full-time crew of force on all of this. Did we send that or not?
So it's in the budget and we're just waiting for new city manager to get all the hiring done because we also are in the process of hiring a wastewater crew.
Could we really start?
No, it's not appropriate.
It has started.
It's not appropriate for city council members to be involved in that.
The mayor said, great.
He has started and worked through aspects of it and he has determined that at this point, the next person to take it on should be our new city manager. But he has spent time on this, he's looked at aspects of this.
So again, it's not a discussion.
I know it's.
So again, we're just discussing future agenda items. I'm reassuring Councilmember Art that the two other items he's brought up are being addressed at this time by city staff.
Thank you.
And that it's not an appropriate place for city council to be involved with staff hiring after we make budget decisions. So are there any other future agenda items?
You're not going to be the fifteen, because you pulled up on the recommendations.
I, you don't have to on my behalf. I'm fine with whatever you guys do. I mean, if you all agree, I mean, it's all up to a majority. It's not up to one person, whether they agree or not. You just get to run the meeting. So I get to be in San Luis Obispo talking about climate change. So I don't care. So, and so seeing none of the future agenda items, we'll move into adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.